Item three, items for review and discussion. Item three A, appearances. You have a few. Three A one is the Perry Area Historic. Ms. Lott, remember?
The mayor and council. I actually have three items, if that's okay with me. But the first one has to do with the Seminole Station on the 7th or 4th Carroll Street. On November 7th, you halted your decision for revision and you agreed to revisit the issue in ninety days. You also agreed to seek a design build proposal for stabilizing the site by re-advertising the proposal on your website. You tasked the Historical Society with ideas for the use of the building. So here's your update. On November 7th, I knew of three contractors, additional contractors from the one that I'm beginning to recall, that were interested in the project. One of those later declined because of the full work schedule. But the names of the remaining two were submitted to Mr. Gilmore on January the 17th and January the 22nd. I kept waiting for the proposal to be listed on the website. And it wasn't there. In early January, I emailed their names to Mr. Gilmore. They received spec sheets from him on January the 29th. But there was no closure date for submission. To date, there still is my proposal on the website. I personally received a letter and a spec sheet from Mr. Gilmore dated January the 24th, but received January the 29th. The spec sheet has no closure date. So with no public advertising on the website, the project is limited to contractors that I know. When in actuality, there are a number of contractors possibly that are interested. It needs to be publicly advertised to maximize the potential interest. In the interim, the Historical Society has floated a petition to determine whether there is any interest in the community in saving the building. After only ten days, we have received 464 signatures to save the building. The Seminole Corporation has been contacted and they are considering how they can best invest in the project. The grants coordinator believes that there will be a significant amount of money for the project. The Historical Society suggests that some of the uses for the building could be a possible visitor center, or information station, or legacy park, like the morning coming Georgia. And I submit to you a picture of the one that's been renovated in coming Georgia. It could also contain restrooms or legacy park. There are no restrooms on that end of period. It could remain a 1930s era icon for the Depression era and the Dixie Highway. Or it could be any combination of the above. So with this information, I would like to request the following. Either sixty or ninety additional days of consideration with a proposal with an ending date being placed on the city website, and the Historical Society to continue petitions and pledges. Couple other things to consider. While the front canopy and the screen part of the pit in the rear are in poor condition, the basic structure of the building is sound and can be restored. There will be costs involved with demolition and disposal of the building, costs that could be weighed against the idea of saving the building. So with that information, we're asking for some additional time to consider what it would cost.
Have any of these folks that are interested pledged anyone?
They have.
Couldn't we know how much that is?
Well, if I knew, I would.
You'd tell me?
Yes, I would. We did it so fast, I didn't, you know, we just got the names. And, but I can tell you this, those who did, there's not anything under a hundred dollars that they're willing, I mean each, that they're willing to put in. And some of them are significant amounts. So, we send the project and I'll get you an email. Any questions?
Counsel. Counsel, leave any objections to extending your ninety days?
No, no. But one of the things we'll have to do is give Mr. Gilmore relative to, I know, I guess I'm, because I thought in the letter he had actually asked, gave them, because he gave me a date, he's not here to talk about tonight, but he gave me a date as what he asked for, so I don't know, I don't know what's in the letter to send to them.
Well, Chair, we both have them today and they have made a, he used a copy of the proposal and the letter for the seminar. So we do need a closure date, a proposal with that closure.
Yeah, he had a date mine, because he gave me a date, so I don't know how it got out of order.
Okay, so ninety days, is that what you're telling me? Ninety days. I'll be back. All right, item number two. A Historic Preservation Commission. On behalf of the Perry Area Historical Society, I am asking mayor and council to give consideration to establishing a Historic Preservation Commission. As our city continues to grow, issues will be forthcoming about preservation of properties of a historic nature. It's just a deal. As I searched the existing commissions across Georgia before I brought this, I found some interesting things. I found cities of similar size to Perry, such as Golden阁, Bangor, St. Mary's, they all have them. The big cities, of course, have them, but the little ones do too. There's some advantages to establishing a commission that I'd like to point out. First of all, it affords the opportunity to apply for Historic Preservation Grants, you know, for buildings I were addressing tonight. I ran across a news article dated January the 21st in the Rome News Tribune that reported that the city of Rome had received more than, you'll miss well, nine point five million dollars over the last seventeen years, which has made a significant difference in the downtown district. The executive director of their Downtown Development Authority stated in this article, "We would not be able to receive those funds for Georgia Heritage Grants without having a Historic Preservation Commission." Another advantage would be that it would give Perry the opportunity to pursue becoming a Georgia exceptional main street city. And Historic Preservation strengthens economic development. In a historic district, people are encouraged to buy and rehabilitate properties because they know that their investment is protected over time. Historic preservation attracts visitors. A historic district can positively impact a local economy through tourism. We know for the reason of, the visitors have come from forty-three states and eight foreign countries because they're bound to carry its history. Stories attract even more. It's good for businesses. To establish this commission, the city would need to do the following. Adopt the Historic Preservation Ordinance, appoint a commission, designate a district, and then develop and adopt design guidelines specific to the district. So again, the Perry Area Historical Society asks mayor and council to give consideration to establishing a Historic Preservation Commission. Any questions? Item number three. Again, on behalf of the Perry Area Historical Society, I'm asking mayor and council to give consideration to keeping in storage at the Perry Arts Center the display cases that were taken from the Jones Jewelers store on Carroll Street. They were used, these five cases are in excellent condition and they can be locked. I have them rekeyed, now they're in just bright shade. We use them for displaying memorabilia during the New Harmony exhibit. And they could be used presently in the Perry Arts Center to display cultural art, the pottery that's being created down there, the art, displays of eating and wood timbres, you know, just displaying things that people in the community are creating. For future events to be held at the Perry Arts Center, these could be invaluable for display. They are presently on loan to the Perry Area Historical Society. They belong to Tommy Wood, who is now seeking to sell them because he was told to remove them from the Arts Center. To replace these, it would cost about five hundred dollars each. So in the future, you know, if we let these go now, in the future, we decide to do display cases, five hundred dollars each. So I'm asking you to please consider retaining these cases to be used. Any questions?
Where are these like, they're at now?
They're in the shooting range, storage area.
Are they being asked to be moved because of renovations?
Yes, they're asked to be removed. Hold on. Mr. Gilmore, that's not going to come down there. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask, what is your thinking on the Gail House?
I like the Gail House very much and I like it right where it is and I think it should be the church office. I think the church needs to retain the Gail House.
Church temple.
Well, let me say, let's say this. I know that the Lord elevates the hills and cowl on the hills.
I know that too.
So, you know, I'm just, he provided the money for it one time. He certainly did provide.
They can get through with that time, though.
You know, I really would like to see it because I think it would be, I think it would be a positive to have a church office at the front of the building on Main Street. I would like to see that happen.
Would you strongly object to Marty Myers getting permission from the city and removing it to a relocation in Perry, in Perry and restore it fully?
I would, I would be back. You would see it, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lott. Item three A two, the Perry Area Chamber of Commerce. We need two days to get a discussion of the 2018 Fallwood Festival. Ms. Lott?
Hello, mayor and council. I am here in particular for the first part to discuss the issue of Fallwood Festival city service request and answering questions that have been submitted. My understanding is that Mr. Gilmore has continued the submission through the police department and public works and fire. So I am at your leisure to answer any questions about that. It is pretty much a rinse and repeat event. The biggest change is that we have asked not to do the trams on Sunday. We don't think that the ROI is there on the time it takes for color converts to man those trams. They're just not huge that much on Sunday. Along those lines, and this is kind of in addition, I spoke with Mr. Gilmore last week. This is not part of our official request. I'm certainly happy to adapt ours if I need to. But the weekend of our Perry Park kickoff, which is also one of our requests, it's kind of a package deal, which is the Saturday of March 17th, that's the weekend that the Family Motor Coaches in town. And they had asked that the city would favor partnering with the Fairgrounds to provide trams on that Wednesday. That date is March 14th. And Mr. Gilmore told me to just make that part of my words tonight. I do just have a letter kind of summarizing that that I will leave with you, one of their packets, brochures for the event. This organization came into the community, Allison and I met with them, they're already working with Ellie a few years ago, she did a historic fashion show with them. They really want to engage and become part of this community when they bring this event. You know, they're looking to possibly make this one of their permanent homes for that event, which we all know that in fact, when an event comes to the Fairgrounds, so I don't need to try and educate any of y'all, you can educate me, I'm sure, on that. But I did have a fellow letter, that is a bit of a change. Again, this is kind of unfamiliar territory for me to ask on their behalf, but I will leave this for you. If I can assist in any way, I'm a continuance of judging council's favor on that, or I'll just connect y'all with the, I'll get out of the way on that. They would like, there, it's abbreviated hours. What happens when they come in, they register on Wednesday, well, nothing starts until Thursday. And if you can imagine how we all try to get to the head of the line at a buffet, they all come in early. So they're in there early registering, then they unload, they park their big RVs. Well, not all have a vehicle behind them. So they're thinking a ten to either three or four timeframe, you know, like an hourly tram or something, maybe just one, maybe two, whatever y'all would work out, would get the people into the downtown corridor. That's where they want to bring them. And I think that's where we want them to be. So if I can assist in any manner, please let me know. And if I have any questions on you about this year's Fallwood Festival, I'd love to meet you there.
But on the trams, is there anything planned for them to do on Wednesday? Or is there something we can work together with CBD and the Downtown Merchants Association, which is now in your committee, to maybe, if they're going to be there for five hours to create something that's more of a welcome for them, rather than just saying, we'll provide transportation down there?
Yes, I certainly see that there's area for that. And I, with the Downtown Merchant Committee now coming up under the chamber, and even if not, I think that's a lead that we can take. We'll be in our space by then as well, and which is one of the reasons that we're excited about that space. We can offer a landing opportunity, you know, either coupons or something to make them feel welcome, you know, some hairy swag for these people if they make the effort to come into town. I would suspect that the merchants would be more than happy. This is what they have tried to do with some of those events. Out of all the events on the top of my head of the Fairgrounds weekend, this is one of the biggest ones that might bring dollars into downtown. You know, when you train Sally Sue to ride a hundred thousand dollar horse, you really don't want her distracted. I mean, that's the truth of some of those events. These people have disposable income, that's why they're riding around in a RV that costs more than most houses. And that's what they're looking for. So I think that would be favorable. Certainly not an expert in, you know, projections like that, but I think that the merchants would favor it and look for ways that they can get an offer, opportunity.
Thank you, fellas. With all the traffic primarily going into the Agrosterne with those large units and all, with running a tram posing safety issues around them? Or do you know?
I'd like to give more details of what kind of plan we're running them and stuff like that, so I can answer that, mayor. I would have some concerns about that, but all that I can do.
Would you look into that, please? I'm out closed, but I don't think council would be opposed to do it? Just want to make sure that we can, we can functionally operate them and safely and do it in order to make that happen.
All right, I'll proceed and make sure Allison is kept abreast of this as well because we went together for meeting. They reached out to me and I told them that this is really a CBD tourism initiative as well, so I made sure she was at that meeting and I made sure it's a partnership and I'll step out of the way. They're our member. Matter of fact, they joined in order to have the community connection, so.
So if you make sure that Major Girls is included?
I'll do so.
As well, as I'm capable, council. Any other questions?
I have one request. Please don't paint our downtown streets with booth numbers. It's so hard for us to get the paint up. And so if there's some other way that you guys can use tape or something like that so we can clean it up, because we're spending a bit of time trying to clean up those streets recently to try to get all the paint over from previous events, not only yours, but everybody else's and so.
Put a bit of sidewalk chalk.
Well, anything that you could use, like sidewalk chalk or whatever, but something that's totally washable when the event's over.
Well, interestingly, the product we have purchased in the past, plain 2D.
And they're not, so.
Yes.
We, our guys, the total works has been working really hard to figure out how to get it up and so.
We will make our, a deeper dive to find a product that works that.
I appreciate that. That's just a personal issue.
Anything else?
Not on that. I guess Ellie and I are y'all's entertainment or education moments, the same thing. If I could allow you to pass these around. Not here, we need to start down that side. As those are going around, one of the privileges of serving in this arena of community development that a chamber has, that I've had, is, you know, we really do cross over a lot of sectors. And when you work in a chamber that runs a festival or any type of small community, you're going to have the privilege to work in tourism as well. So several years ago, I began my certification process with the Southeast Tourism Society and it is very well established, very well respected in the U.S. And one of my any projects is some presentations to some public organizations and some other opportunities. So that's what you're getting here tonight. And I hope that you will share with me for just a few moments. I promise I won't take too much of your time. But through the course of study, one of the main focuses obviously on tourism is how to engage and to increase visitors' connection to our community and their experiences here. And I promise Ellie and I did not practice this and give you both at the same time, but some of her words are going to be reflected in this presentation as well. So moving forward, I have it up here on the screen for you, but also in front of you on your, on your handout, it was an opportunity to take a look at who visits Perry. Now, most of these categories, we all do know. But our biggest is those I-75 travelers. Now, if you call them travelers, that gets blunt, that's what most of them are. You know, eighty-five, ninety percent are traveling. They're passing by and they stop, but they didn't come to Perry for a reason. Then obviously our Fairgrounds event attendees, that's massive. Our Dogwood Festival attendees, that's one of the biggest public events that we have that draws tens of thousands of people to our community. It also, we do have our shoppers and we do have our friends and our families that come and into our community. Well, why is that important? Why should we care? Well, it's really the spending, the importance of our visitor spending. And that is one of the biggest reasons that we want to make sure we're focused on increasing that visitor engagement. And when you look at any type of impact study, there's always the multiplier effect. I'm sure that's not a term that is unfamiliar to you. But what does that really involve? At the top of that slide, it does list hotels, but we could easily substitute any type of retail business, any type of our services that these travelers group, friends and families, all of them, they do impact. And it's about when a tourist or a visitor comes into our community and they spend money, what have they done? They have now given that retail owner, they have given that waitress, they've given her money to spend to give our community, which is just a cycle which we hope to benefit from. I do want you to pay attention to the last segment of this graphic and it is money lost through leakage. And I have started that because I think that's an important factor that I will go further into as we go along. Basically, and simply put, the impact of a visitor spending is that the money paid by the visitors will be used several times in our local community. It'll pass through different sectors of our economy and the end results should be great. Now, you can kind of look at a visitor as a visiting taxpayer, that we don't have to provide schools for, we don't have to provide services for. They will use our roads and they will be subject to protection of our public service officers, yes. But they don't come and burden our society and our community for a long period of time. Currently, who are our primary recipients of a direct visitor spending? And I think it won't be hard to imagine from city council point of view and our guests that in particular with our I-75 traffic, usually it's exits 135 and 136. And those are the businesses, the gas stations, the convenience stores, the chain restaurants, and the hotels. They obviously get the impact of the money firsthand and firsthand. The I-75 travelers in particular, they're usually going to choose one or two of those exits. They're not going to particularly choose, but they're traveling with a family, I mean, I was traveling, let's stop, let's eat, we're going to get gas, and we're going to take a comfort break, all in the same place. If you don't want the congestion, maybe a same none, and you know about the jam on exit 135, you can do all those things there. And especially if you have seen the CBD steelboards on the interstate and you have a little puppy doll, you're going to stop there because A, it's fast, they have a dog run and you can get in and out for a comfort break. So we definitely have those two exits covered and they are being handled very well. And honestly, the Fairgrounds traffic is a heavy user of exit 135 and some of 134. But do we have visitor leakage? Back to that last segment on the graphic. And are we missing an opportunity to strengthen the connection to our visitors in our community? In short, I believe we do and I believe there is. And where does that fade to? I think that our downtown offers our visitors a sense of pride. It is where our history, that means our history. And all of middle Georgia knows this and we know this, that we are the envy of many of them, not just middle Georgia, not just Jackson County, but even in our state. And while the general length of reasons for that envy is long, in terms of what draws a visitor, not just a traveler, to our community, one only has to look at the historic downtown. You find a place of beauty set in a cared-for, rip line street where an excitement halts us among business owners. Truly, we do have a crown to hold. Cited by the Center for Rural Affairs, Joanne Steele's study found that small towns and rural communities are seeing economic growth by being exactly who they are. In her article, Rural Tourism: It's Never Been a Bad Time to Be a Small Town, she further explains that visitors are craving local food and connections to the lifestyles of the locals. A quick word from our visitors via trip advisor. And you can see on your handout and on the board that they love to visit this area Perry, this is in particular to the historic downtown. They have enjoyed the old fashioned downtown that has been nicely preserved and it's a quaint little street with the nicest people. They love our shops, they love our people, they love what they find. Even Dogwood Festival attendees, sorry, got to do a little plug there, a little commercial. They love it and one is from Macon, but one is from Louisiana. It's not just regional and local visitors. Why the person was here in Louis, from Louisiana, I tried to find a way to get in touch with them. Were they traveling, were they passing, were they family or friend? I do not know. However, they love our community. But can we do better? Is there room for improvement? And unfortunately, with the good, there is a little, maybe not so good, not anything particularly bad, but the end of the first one, boutiques everywhere. But there's not, the women love these stores, but the men will quickly tire of them. And the fact that we are a charming town with many historical buildings. And I, I had this one up here because it says many shops were closed, but window shopping was easy since they didn't have to fight the crowds. Obviously, they probably visited on a Monday. And that is something that we're very excited to address as well. Now, we'll get And that is something that we're very excited to address as well, and I will get to that point.
Can I give a trick?
Yes, sir.
Experience I had in a small town in Virginia that needs to be thought about. I stopped, got a hotel room, and it was six o'clock. I got downtown to walk around, and everything was locked up.
Yes, sir, and that is part of, part of the words in the moment, too. Much the same article.
But on the Monday issue, more and more of them are now, we had one merchant stay open on Monday, and then there's probably three or four now that have changed their hours to open on Monday, and so. And that says they had Thanksgiving dinner at Swanson, so I would think that that was over the Thanksgiving Day weekend, and so there weren't a lot of them opening then. But I, I think the Monday thing, they're finding out if they're there, people will show up.
Yes, and, and I'm going to get back to that point for the end of this as well. But can we do better? Yes, we can, and we must. The question is how? Capturing the downtown visitors, I think is very important to this process. And you'll see the address, nine hundred Carroll Street, has become near and dear to my heart. Serving visitors where they are. In a May of two thousand fifteen study by the Environmental Protection Agency of the U.S., it was cited that the fact, that an effective way to grow interest in a community is through street ambassadors. These people sell your community on the street. Also in her study for Center, for the Center for Rural Affairs, she still visited four ways to improve and create visitor connections. Her number two item was, provide more community information where the visitors are. Other communities already know this, Front d'Ina Beach, Pearl Street in Boulder, Annapolis, Maryland, with their satellite center. In his article, Ten Things Your Small Downtowns Can Do, Mr. Greg McLaughlin offers as his number one suggestion, offering services such as wifi to your guests. We plan to take this even a step further and offer a place where these men visitors that had nothing to do can relax, read, watch very promotional videos while their girls shop. Remember, the longer they linger, the more they spend. Mr. McLaughlin also listed things such as late nights and meet the shopper, meet the shop owners, which is already in the works with the combination of our downtown merchants coming under the, um, coming under the chamber. Also, what we look forward to, to address the Monday, and that was not a slight nor any type of dig at our downtown merchants, from the time I have been here in Perry, I have heard, they need to be open, they need to be open, they need to be open. I submit that none of us know their books or what it takes for them to operate their business profitably. The main thing they need to do is be profitable and be open and be successful. When the downtown merchants sought out the chamber and Main Street to partner with them, I told them very frankly, we need you to be making the best soap, buying the best clothes, and the prettiest things for people to come into our downtown. That's your story, you need to find it, we need to tell it. And that's what we have the opportunity to do. So if we can collect data, we don't need to be telling them, you need to be open on Monday. We need to have data. Just many people came into a downtown information corner and visited with us, and we've got their names, we've got their contacts here, reach out to them. They asked us about you. If we can give them our data, then they might be able to make those informed decisions. Again, their bottom line is their bottom line, and we cannot touch that. So, continuing on, what could we look for at nine hundred Carroll, hopefully complete very soon? In the same two thousand and fifteen EPA study, um, which was entitled, How Small Towns and Cities Can Use Local Assets to Build Their Economies: Lessons from Successful Places. As a focus of the article, Douglas County, Georgia, with a population of twelve thousand, not quite our size, but not far behind, emphasized their success was grounded in cooperation among the city, the county, the business community, and civic leaders. The message was clear, together we all succeed. The chamber's vision is very clear. We have the opportunity to serve our members, community, and most importantly, our partnering organizations in a new and exciting way. Even before our doors had opened, the chamber offered Bob the Buzzard a private attending room. With the upcoming Peaches to Beaches, I've already offered Allison a place from which she and her staff can run their events. With the new future of our downtown merchants, fun, creative after-hours events are on the horizon. In terms of Main Street and city events, you now have a space in the corridor. There's a new flavor to the cup of history and future walking tours in partnership with the historical society. The list of opportunities to engage our community with our visitors and the chamber's new space with our partnering organization is the same as our excitement. It is indeed endless. In closing, our number one community export, I did say business export, I didn't say industrial export. I said, community export is the fact of our attitude in that we all are Perry proud. Nine hundred Carroll Street offers a corner to where Perry can sit. I hope you will join me in our excitement for our future together, and the chamber as we hopefully are your new neighbors in the next couple of months. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I'm three B, Leisure Services Department, with a presentation of Heritage Park, Phase One. You guys?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor and Council, I'd like to introduce Adam Williams from TSW. This is a project we've all been very excited about seeing. He's brought a really nice presentation for us to give us a look into the future for our big park down the road.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm Adam Williams from the TSW, I'm about to be back in Perry. We'll give you a brief update on the Heritage Park, Mayor and Council. Um, one thing on Legacy Park, we worked on, on that project, honestly, and we, I'd be a big proponent of saving that building also. Um, I know it's a, it's a stored building, and we started to come up with a valid economic reason probably to save it, but it is, I think, if there's a bathroom or if there's some type of space that could be, be saved. Because you can almost look at that building as if it was a sign, if you were building a sign coming into Perry, walking to Perry, you'd look at it as, as that. So it is a nice, nice building. But I'm here to talk about Heritage Park, sorry to talk about. Um, here's the, here's the update of Heritage Park, we're close. You remember, this, this here is the original master plan? And then we were, so we moved the construction documents, and we were trying to figure out how can we get this project started? And so we, we came up with multiple phases. And so this is the updated plan, Phase One, and these are the construction documents we're apparently working on and almost complete. So you have the access point for the new drive coming in to the amphitheater where they, this would be where, if you had a van, people could park here and come, come around. Most of the parking would be in this area, and then we had overflow parking, remember, in the grass area? And then ADA access here, and, and we have a sidewalk system that takes you into a oval area with a stage here. And so we'll show you the next phase would be more sidewalks, especially a fountain, more landscaping. And then, and then we go into Phase Three, which completes the park with a trail system taking you around, Dog Park, and a flexible area here. And so, these are some visuals, three-dimensional visuals, to kind of give you a feel for Phase One with the amphitheater. This is the amphitheater oval with the stage here. And you can see how the sidewalks are built with the fountain and the sidewalk system. And then we finally have bathroom facilities and complete this trail system all throughout the park, the Dog Park, look in there. This is just a view from the bathroom down to the stage area. You can see how this flexible lawn would work, helping it flow into this oval area. Uh, this is a, um, this is a grading plan, but really I just put this in here to show you that, you know, you come in the drive, and you would slope down, down to the parking lot. This area here is sloping down to the stage, and you can, and then this area is fairly flat with the, and this is a slope that slopes down, tying to grade around this area. This is a, an alternate shade structure that we were proposing for Phase One. It comes in budget, just give you a feel for how that would look for covering the shade. And then the bottom line, this, this is Phase One, we have around nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars as a budget, as our cost estimate. We have a fifteen percent contingency at eight hundred and twenty-four thousand. And then the stage shade sale actually is an add option, another eighty. And so I just kind of want to give you guys an update where we are. We're trying to, trying to get it in budget, which I think is more, I think our budget's really about told to be around, I think, nine or eight fifty or nine hundred thousand. So we're struggling to try to get all these elements in, but the bottom line is when the bid comes in, they'll tell us kind of what, what the real price is, um, so what we're trying to get as close as possible. And then we also, we have the, um, sorry, we also have Phase Two, which is around eighty-seven forty thousand. If Phase Two would be another million. So our construction drawings, again, are just for Phase One, and we're close to finishing those out, and hopefully those will rock the pit soon. So, so that's the presentation. Y'all have any questions? Questions?
Just, you guys want to finish up the construction drawings, because we have lots of questions about when we're going to get started on it, so.
We're pushing, we're pushing, so hopefully we'll get those done very soon. They're close.
In fact, I had a fellow ask me the same thing, you know, planning some events, and I said, we won't meet this summer.
Right, right, but we're very excited, it's a great project.
Any other questions?
How many people can you, can people get an amphitheater?
Uh, I think we planned it for like four or five thousand, but it's, I haven't, I can't remember exactly, but I think it's a pretty large space, and the way it's designed, people could spill out of that oval area, and so you'd be a lot of people in there.
And with the, with the functionality of it, uh, from day one of being involved with Adam and the project, is, you know, going with a multi-purpose aspect, and with the way the contingency parking is, it's not paved, you can always use that space to keep going back further, to have even more. But within the main circle of the target audience, you know, that's so large out there, so example, Green Street, I, I couldn't even conceive the number if they were going back towards the wood line, the tree line.
There's more, how many people can you park?
Exactly, how many people can you park?
Our target is, we'd like to have ten thousand people go up out there for a bit.
I think you hold it, except you're going to get everybody in there and park. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Adam.
I'm three C, Economic Development Department, three C ones of wayfinding implementation. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mayor and Council, continuing with our discussion regarding implementation of the wayfinding system that was presented back in December by KMA, you have before you, your consideration, a document prepared by me that provides kind of an overview about staff's recommendations moving forward, provides some general information pertaining to signage types and all of that. And then most importantly, perhaps, based on our previous discussion on this, are the traffic counts associated with the signs to be destructive. Uh, you will recall that during that discussion, y'all had some questions in regards to utilizing objective data and determining where the prioritization lies in implementing this thing. Um, you know, obviously, it's something we're going to have to phase in over a number of years as funding is made available. Uh, so I, I put together a general overview, if you will, or analysis on it shows each type of sign to be fabricated, installed, its general location, uh, and then based on that general location, a traffic count for that location. Uh, so I hope you, it's pretty intuitive. Um, I thought it was pretty interesting just putting the numbers together, and I provided some kind of general insights on the memo there. Um, I thought, you know, mostly striking the Joe Courtney Hodges Boulevard is actually our busiest street. Um, and that exit thirty-five is actually busier than exit, or exit one thirty-five is actually busier than exit one thirty-six. So just some general observations there. And in moving forward, um, you know, you've kind of, got to kind of look at this in two ways. There's the wayfinding system to be fabricated, installed, and then there's the ongoing, um, moving forward with city facility signage, um, like parks, city buildings, that type of thing. Uh, what you have before you, and what I'm kind of asking from y'all tonight, I made discussions with the city manager. Um, we thought it'd be best, if moving forward, we utilize the traffic counts. Uh, we utilize our general knowledge about the community in regards to typical areas of ingress, um, and also proximity to destinations, uh, you know, where are people going in Perry? How are they getting here, that type of stuff? Uh, and kind of taking into account all of that, just moving through the schedule and installing signage as funding is allocated by the city manager. Uh, that's what we were kind of thinking. Um, y'all may have very different thoughts, um, but we just kind of wanted to get the conversation going on this and see how y'all wanted to proceed.
Now?
I would fully agree with that, especially with traffic counts. Other than be flexible enough, if we have a sign that's damaged, you've got to be replaced for some reason.
Sure.
To be flexible and replace it.
Of course. And a lot of time to get to that point.
So you got the first three we've already allocated the funding for, is that correct?
Uh, the first three city facility signs, yes, sir.
And, but we haven't allocated any funding at this point in time to do what you want to do here.
Yes, sir.
Are you asking for funding tonight?
Well, the city manager will be here to discuss that, since he's the funding master. But I, I think it's, in our discussions about this, is allocating funding, and it's my understanding that funding for this would come through, puts on no total tax revenues? It would, it would actually not be for, uh, yes. Um, so, no funding has been allocated. If y'all want to allocate some funding, that'd be cool, too. But, you know, I think the city manager has a pretty good idea about what might be.
I'm just kind of asking a question.
Yeah, I mean, we'll take, we'll take.
You sure won't ask you for money every time?
I know, I know. It's basically also huge a plan.
You're, you're fulfilling your expectations.
But I do, this would be an excellent project, something we can do.
So, question, Council?
Yes, it would be something we would have to ask Mr. Gilmore, uh, Mayor, to talk to us at our next work session, to give a recommendation for funding. Because if we agree with what you have here, and we don't give you any funds to do it with, then we have to, we have to move forward very fast.
Yes, sir.
That sounds good. We can have the council. Anything else, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
I'm three C two, these are probably pointing out, I think, on the, on the calendar.
So, goal of special events. Um, uh, the first thing I did, the kind of the boxes of coming up with this whole proposed town event, was take into consideration, this is a very specific one, my first day, I kind of went through that, sought out the vision that the mayor and council was heading towards the city, and tried to take that into full effect with what I brought for you. Um, I also included various other goals of my own, um, such as continuing, continuing to cultivate and sustain community culture that's inviting for everyone of, um, very diverse different communities that the city apparently has. Um, and then also walk trading, or walk trading this calendar events, I took into community input, I thought that was very important. So on social media, we reached out to our community, and we asked the type of events they'd like to see, um, through Instagram, Facebook, and also our F O I newsletter. Um, several people said the same things, a lot of them were food trucks, more, um, health and wellness activities, more events with local musicians, a lot of entertainment. Um, so taking all of that into consideration, I came up with a very robust and in-depth potential calendar of events. Um, beginning with our existing annual events, we have the Perry Buzzard Drive, that's been very successful because of the mayor and council, and, um, we're so thankful for that. The, also the Perry Music Festival, the Fishing Radio, and the Perry Water Battle. Um, I intend to keep all existing annual events, I think that's important for the community and tradition. Um, I've also included Sweet and Treats and Small Business Saturday, for if, in case some reason merchants do not decide to keep those events, I think it's very important for the community morale, and the community generally enjoys those events, so I also included them in my potential calendar, just in case, to see what happens. Um, moving over to new potential annual events, this would be proposed to happen every year, a Perry May Day celebration. Uh, this would be a springtime celebration that includes live entertainment and music, um, food and beverage vendors, and a traditional maple, um, a courthouse lawn potentially, and that would be really cool to do this in some of the middle of the city, that's traditional, um, and celebrate spring, just kind of a big celebration for our whole Perry community. And then, moving forward, also Oktoberfest, a fall festival and citywide event and celebration. Um, we have a potential, we have a partnership with the Slayman's Club, so that would be really interesting to also include different kind of culture that that festival would bring as well. Um, other potential events, this could also turn into annual events, if, if they have successful outcomes. Um, but beginning with the Gru's and Beer St. Patrick's Day event, the merchants put it on last year, but it's my understanding that that's not gonna continue to issue, so this would be, um, in coordination with the Land to Hand, a local nonprofit, would love to keep this event going, which is just super exciting. Uh, the St. Patrick's Day celebration, of, like I said, in coordination with Land to Hand, a local nonprofit, that takes place downtown, you'll have live entertainment and music, um, and then other community events, such as like the beer competition, et cetera. Um, keep, we have the special needs egg hunt, so keeping in mind different communities that we have, um, reaching all different diverse types of communities in the city of Perry, I think it's important that, um, we can remind these type of events, so we'd be an Easter egg hunt specifically for the special needs community, and be open to all of middle Georgia. From my research and understanding, it's not, the special needs community isn't necessarily targeted at all in middle Georgia, so I think that's an important asset to keep in mind in Perry, to bring something new for that specific community. And I also did further research and looked up what activities were successful for special needs, and a lot of cities nationwide have Easter icons that have turned out really successful. We also have a Ride to Wizard, which would be a family bike ride and picnic at Roser Park, where it'd be pop music, this just kind of includes a health and wellness activity, something that could be fun community ride. The route is to be determined, obviously, you'd have to coordinate with public safety and leisure services to make that a safe event, but it potentially has, um, could be a lot of fun. Um, the Truck Fridays, which would be an event series, which we truck festival from, um, every Fri- or not every Friday, but the first Friday of every month. Um, I've talked to neighboring cities that have done this successfully, such as Centerville, um, and we've tried to work out a, or we have worked out a coordination and partnership to where if they have things down on, say, the first and third Fridays, we have things going on the second and fourth, um, just so that there's always something happening in middle Georgia. And so they have also shared their local food truck vendors with me, so we have a portfolio of different kinds of vendors, so there's always different ones to come throughout those Fridays. We also have a Get Up and Go Act. This should be at Roser Park, we schedule activities throughout the day led by local instructors from different gyms, other certified instructors, and we can target those through our social media to find them. Um, this would include child friendly classes, and it could be a potential place where local gyms and healthy food vendors could set up tables and kinda promote their own businesses, like local businesses in Perry as well. We have yoga in the park, so this would be, um, on Saturdays throughout the summer, and it'd be a potential recurring event, um, you know, a simple morning routine activity, open for the whole community. Um, have Perry Presents, which is a summer concert series, it'd be a summer lawn concert series leading up to the Perry Music Festival. I'm trying my best to kinda give that event this year like a facelift, um, start it from the ground up and make it much more successful than it already is, especially with, um, Mr. Longkin, who works so hard and does a great job at that event. Um, each month throughout the summer, we would have a different local band or artist who would come and play for the community, and it'd also just be a chance to kind of, um, promoting that as a type of the music festival as well. Each band, each month would be a different genre, et cetera. We have a Saturday cinema series, uh, this would be a summer movie series in the park, the location changes so that it's, um, very diverse to all of the communities that we have in Perry. Um, we would also let the community to pick the movie that they would like to see via social media, try to encourage event participation as well. Park in the Park, um, celebration for animals and their owners, it could be a potential partnership with local humane organizations such as Spohas, the Hu- um, Houston County Humane Society, K nine club, et cetera. Um, just a fun day for animals and their owners to come out and enjoy the city of Perry. Um, Ice Cream Festival and Buzzard Pageant, this would be a community-wide homemade ice cream competition, so different community members could come up with different ice cream recipes and enter them, and then the rest of the community could taste them, because they don't love ice cream in the summer, and a lot of it. Um, and this, we would also kind of try to include our first annual Buzzard Court Pageant, that would also ensure and promote our Buzzard Drive. So you have a buzzet, a buzzard queen, et cetera, like being a parade, it'd be super fun. Um, Perry Field Day, this would be in coordination with leisure services and parks and rec. Um, citywide field day would have various competitions for adults, children, families. Um, individuals could participate in this, different churches could have their own teams, businesses, you know, just a fun day to get out and be competitive, safely of course, but it'd be super fun. The UGA versus Florida Tailgate and Cornhole Tournament, um, this event was proposed last year in the works, but I think the weather kind of, you know, wasn't able to happen, so we'd love to bring it back this year, but also implement a cornhole tournament, because he doesn't like to play cornhole or do tailgates. Um, we have a chili cook-off and mustache bash, so again, this would be a community-wide chili cook-off event, community members could introduce their chili recipes for us, and the community could taste them. Um, I, potentially this could be in November, which is no shaving November, the famous month of not shaving your mustache, she'd have a mustache competition as well, just other ways to incorporate different community members. Um, and then a holiday apparel celebration, it's my understanding of the city of Perry has several, um, holiday and Christmas celebrations, there's a lot of great things that happen, like our St. Louis Fire Truck Ride happened last, last year with the fire department, which was really successful. You have your lightings, and you have your Christmas parades, so trying to coordinate that into one big day, um, where the whole community celebrates together, it could be a really cool and big event. So, that would be my potential timeline of events, and then included in the package that you all received has the full timeline, and we'd love to hear your questions, um, critiques, and so on.
I love you in the calendar.
I'll just say I'm very excited about the idea of more events in Perry, uh, as a millennial in fact, and, you know, my generation loves outdoor events, being outside, having these experiences, and they're willing to pay everything they're out to learn to experience. Uh, I think what you're talking about here heavily ties back to what Mr. Plender said, also what Ms. Lawren said, uh, and I just feel like the seamless flow of all of that, you know, and I really just want to say a phrase, seamless flow. Also, I can switch the buzzer pack if you send me the tools.
Well, listen, for my, as you do know.
But in all seriousness, I, I do think this is the important, uh, aspect that we'll continue to establish.
We have been waiting on the arrival.
Sounds great.
It really does, it's, it's, and it rounds out, you know, what we're trying to do, and answers the question, well, what do you do in the future? Right, yes. You got, basically, something to do. Yes.
And something for everyone to do, not just in the specific community.
And it changes, so that, that's a good thing.
Right, and obviously this calendar of events says room for growth and development, you always wanna give them something to look forward to in case an event comes to me down to the next year and becomes annual, um, so I'm excited to make that happen as well, which kinda moves into keeping the future in mind. Um, you know, just kinda thinking five years ahead, or, um, maybe three years, you would potentially create an advisory board or even a events committee to help with event planning organization, um, specifically to establish outside financial support, you may create unique sponsorships, tap into those untapped sponsorships that we have within the community and corporate sponsors. Um, in twenty twenty, I talked to, um, Ellie last week, I met with her, I've been busy meeting with a lot of community members and partners to see what they would be interested in as well. She brought to my attention that housing county turns two hundred years old in twenty twenty, so Perry getting the jump on that, it being the oldest city in the county, hosting that celebration countywide would be really exciting in twenty twenty. And then obviously in partnership with the city of Perry, Centerville, Byron, et cetera, or city, I'm sorry. And then continue to add both traditional and new events, so potentially a Founder's Day celebration, focusing on the history of Perry, where we come from, where we're headed, that could be a potential event in the future as well. Smaller things such as bingo nights, barbecue and brews, potential ice skating, that's my ultimate dream, I'll see if that happens. But, you know, there's time. And then to just summarize everything, all of them are geared towards enhancing the quality of life in Perry, giving all residents something to look forward to, ensuring a competitive and progressive middle Georgia community.
Very good. Well done. Thank you so much. Look forward to the updates.
And.
Can I ask the ambassador a question?
Yeah, right.
Where is the funding going?
Leo now.
We just, we just talked to Leo. No, I just, you did a very nice job about outlining what you think the potential costs are gonna be, but I was just thinking, are you gonna try to do it through a combination of sponsorships with different people who might have an interest in the special interest group or something like that, or, or is it something we need to look at hotel motel tax as a potential, you know, funding for part of it, uh, those type of things? I didn't know what your thoughts were on that.
So we came up with estimated budgets for individual events, of course, none of that include local partnerships or sponsorships, and it's my understanding that I couldn't solicit for selling, so coming up with like different people to reach out to those corporate sponsors, but it is my, I plan and hope to have sponsors that would eventually take on these events and help sponsor them, partner with them, and then also looking at different, um, tax laws, like you were saying, but that's a lot of the real.
And what we've done in the past, part of our agreement is, is if we agree to these type things, then the city has funded them to get them started, so in their incubation stage, if you will, that's how we did the buzzer drop, and it's how we've done other things, that, you know, try to help them get up and running, if they're successful, then they'll get a life of their own, and, and so.
Right.
Okay. So something else we need to talk to Mr. Gilmore about, put on his list.
Excited for this conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, three C three, G Suites by Google Cloud.
Get out this camera. Okay. Honestly, not as excited as if it's calendar, I wish I could've gone first, but, um, Mayor Council, I wanna talk to you tonight about, um, switching our current email system, which is Microsoft Outlook, to, uh, G Suites by Google Cloud. Um, this has come up, um, after some of the major email issues we had in the last year, I think y'all experienced some of them, we definitely experienced a lot of them, spam and, uh, or the school emails, whatever you like to call it, I'm not, I can't, first of all, I have my peer from cocktail. But, um, I do wanna talk to you about, I did kinda head up, I guess, a committee to discuss with the department heads and some management about what their feelings were about our I T capabilities and security, and how they felt about everything, and the overall feeling is there's kinda a lack of confidence in that right now. And I think the best way, or one of the solutions to that is changing our current email to G Suites by Google. And so you have a memo in front of me discussing all the benefits, you have a statement of work, um, another document you have is from Onyx Networking Corporation, this is, um, a government provider or reseller for G Suites, and ConStap has been working closely with them, um, to get all the details, but, um, just generally, I wanna go through some of the benefits that we've seen, or that I see, um, that we would greatly benefit from by switching to G Suites. Um, first and foremost, foremost is the security. Um, you really just can't even compare anything with Google these days. Um, you know, we would be working within the Google Cloud, so the city would benefit from their, you know, very reliable security environment. Um, you know, they're an industry leader and an innovator, um, and they just can't, but traditional technologies like Microsoft Outlook really cannot compete with them. Um, they can't keep up, they're just a more static program. Um, so number one is the security that we would benefit from switching to G Suites. Another is the storage, right now we have about one gigabyte per email user with Microsoft Outlook, if we switched to G Suites, we would have thirty gigabytes, which is obviously substantially more, um, and that would help with retention of files, um, for like open record requests and all that we have to do by law. Um, also productivity, um, with Google, we have access, integration of email calendars, um, Google Drive documents on all our devices, uh, we'd also be able to, um, share calendars, we'd be able to set up filters of our own, and we have our office assistant and more. So just, this is an endless list of things you can do through G Suites. Um, going kinda back to security, their filters are just state of art, um, they just do the best at filtering out spam. So, we, you know, maybe if we'd been on G Suites, we wouldn't have received all those spam emails, opened up those invoices, and, you know, computers were taken over by those things. So that's what Google does, if they filter out that spam, so there's, you know, that possibility is not there for us to open up things we shouldn't be opening up, or sending it to outside agencies, and they opened it up, so now they have that virus on their computer. Um, another, um, benefit is the functionality, so right now, um, with our Outlook, we can only send, the city only can only send a hundred emails per hour per user. So that's a big limitation for those sending out big, um, emails to different sorts of people. Um, where with G Suites, the limit is much larger, it's two thousand per user per day. Um, also, we do not have a global directory with our email, um, which can be very cumbersome and time consuming, and with G Suites, we would have that citywide global, um, directory for everyone to use. Um, a couple of other things, email addresses and interface, so, uh, we would not have to change our email addresses, everyone would still have the same, like mine would still be Ellen dot com or at Perry dot G A dot gov, and if people prefer the Outlook interface, they could keep that, or if you prefer to go to the Gmail G Suites look, you can go to that. Um, common files is a one that came off a question, because a lot of us like to use our office documents, like Word, Excel, PowerPoint, and this would still work with all those, none of that would change. Um, also the support, ConStap would still be our end user support, um, but Google also has an ample amount of online help, so, um, which we don't have that right now with Outlook, you can kinda search anything on Google and find out, you know, what you need to know. Um, and then just kinda looking towards the future with upgrading, if we ever felt like we needed unlimited in storage, or more reporting, or anything like that, um, we could upgrade to their, um, business package, kinda seamlessly, it wouldn't be a whole new like system that we would have to do, we could just upgrade. Um, so with all that being said, um, like I said, I had, that, that was some department heads, um, the department heads and some management, and I have testimonies from employees that work here that have worked elsewhere that have used G Suites, and they had nothing but good things to say about it and praised it, uh, for all its capabilities and its security and its filters. Um, so to switch to G Suites, um, it would be the basic G Suites, which is what I'm proposing to you, that package, it's fifty dollars per email user annually. We have about two hundred email users right now, so it would be, be ten thousand dollars a year. Um, the first year, um, ConStap, um, would need this Onyx Networking Corporation to help us switch over, so that setup cost would only be four thousand dollars within this system, that was only that one time cost. So the first year, the investment into G Suites would be fourteen thousand, and then after that, it would be fifty dollars per email user, and that's just depend on how many email users we have, but if we stuck around two hundred, it would be. If we stuck around 200, it would be $10,000. So, that was a lot of information, but y'all have any questions for me, concerns?
Are there any issues with the storage of emails?
No, it would all be in the cloud, that's kind of the perks of it. If I'm saying anything wrong, just chime in.
No, you're doing okay.
You have, you have.
No, there's not, so, now your emails now are stored in the cloud also, or at a server in a location in South Carolina. You download those to your computers now. How Google does it, it stays in the cloud and you'll interface between your computer and cloud. Several of our businesses in here now use the same product, CUB, Chamber, Walker, very more, they all use the same product, so it's as secure as any product out there as far as you, you, you'll find, so. It will give you another level of security that we, in addition to everything else that we do, that you don't have now.
Is there any, are there any issues interfacing with, like our website?
Yeah.
Counsel?
I wouldn't recommend we do that personally, and I'm at a very small cost to protect our system and what we just face, will make us more secure on the floor. And it's not, not out of range for what we pay anyway, trying to update the software and everything, so. I would think they would continuously update the software rather than having to buy a new package.
Thank you.
I'm sure there'll be costs associated with it, but.
Good mail. Look forward.
Thank you.
Baker, you okay with all that?
I'm very good with that.
You're gonna have to call him when it breaks.
I understand, it's a good, it's a good thing, if the city will benefit straightly from it. And one thing she didn't mention that you might be, calendar sharing, resource scheduling, things like that, it's like the Art Center, the Council Room, all that kind of stuff, you can do all that resource management within that same product, so that gives you an added benefit to it also.
Good deal. Thanks. Our emergency services department, 3D wants a security lock protection, security lock for the city hall's front doors. I was looking for you.
No, you're fine. Mayor Council, thank you, my understanding you have some questions on the fire alarm system, the replacement fire alarm system at Roger Park, and also some questions about the security lock for the city hall front doors. If there's any questions I can answer.
Counsel? What type of lock are you proposing?
The same locks that we have on the building currently, it's the, I have Jeff here, he's the owner, one of the owners of the company, that's the fire alarm security, Jeff, what kind of lock would?
They're magnetic locks.
Magnetic lock. And you would need a key card, if they are locked, anybody with a key card could access those doors. Also, I think one of the big questions is after hours, if there's stuff going on, how we can let people in. We notice locks to be programmed any time of the day for as long as you want or as short as you want, so they can lock and open, lock and open, depending on what, what program we put into it.
What happens if?
They're programmed to be locked and they stumble, major security, a major emergency, keep people coming in?
No, well, anybody who has a.
Still could come in with a key card.
That's right. Yeah, so if anybody that's supposed to, or works for the city is going to have a key card, then they would be able to get in.
So you're gonna do away with the deadbolt type of blocking that you can't just come out here with your key?
That's right, yes sir.
And you're gonna do the one on the front as well?
The front, I would, I would recommend doing all access doors with the key lock, just make them all the same, same type of thing, so it'd be the side door, Mr. Gilmore's door, which is up there, I don't think that's used at all earlier, but.
It's used.
Is it? So we can do that.
Just a key is all, you've got a key, you can walk in there.
Okay.
The landing?
Yeah, all it takes is just.
Rock, do you have your key on you? Looks like you do.
My key?
Yeah.
Oh, this thing?
That's, that's what it looks like right now.
This?
Yep, you got them. That's it. So with that, you'd be able to get in any, any lock?
After hours, someone has to automatically lock the door while he's not putting it on?
It locks on its own. So if we, we choose to lock at five o'clock, that's no automatic lock at five o'clock. People that are in the building can, of course, get out, you walk in the door, press a button, let you out.
That was my main concern about if, if we in here after hours and something happened, I'm like a, a fire something, then we'd be able to go out the door without hesitation.
That's right.
It's a panic lock, I would recommend.
It's, well, it's, it's not a, what do you call it, Jeff?
Well, you have egress motion detectors and request exit buttons that enable you to get out, as well as this is handicap accessible, so those are going to remain the same on the door as it is now, it just will be, no longer be a key lock. The egress will, will remain the same.
Let me ask you, this is getting too far in the weeds, but who would then be responsible for the timing of the locks for meetings?
Right now, currently, it's me. I do it for Kevin's building, because they are on, on time, so they open and close.
And your backup is who?
Big question, Mr. Mayor. I tried to make Karen, but she wants no part of it, so.
I'll blame her.
I don't blame her either. That's a good question, I don't know, city maybe?
We need a protocol, we need a protocol for to have one or two backups.
I agree.
In case you're out or on vacation.
That program can go on another computer as well, right? See, he goes program on the computer, so anybody who has a program on their computer can access that. Another good thing too, is anybody who comes in the building, there's going to be a time date stamp of who it is, so you're part.
The cards are assigned.
That's right. And I could also, say we have people, there's a, I don't know, DDA meeting that's on Monday sometimes, on Wednesday sometimes, but we could issue them a card to where it will only open that door. They can't get anywhere else in city hall, but they can get in that door to go to the meeting. So it's, it's really user friendly.
But this would only be after hours, after whatever time you've got it programmed to lock.
Yes, sir.
And if they come to a meeting afterwards, then you'll have access during the day.
Yeah, it's open, it's open, business, yeah, open for business. The only doors that we can program, if you guys choose to go on with the other doors, those would probably stay open for security reasons.
But they're still accessible, Mr. Wood.
Couple of questions, so for after hours meetings, like council meetings, planning commission meetings, DDA others, are they going to have to have an assigned card, or does it, or can we just program the, the door to stay open for that period of time?
We can assign the doors.
Because we'll have public, the public.
That's right, and we know when workshops are every Monday, you know, every other Monday or whatever.
Okay, but it can be changed specifically?
Sure can.
Okay, and what about power outages?
They're on battery backup, much like anything, once the battery backup, typically you wouldn't have power loss for more than 48 hours, but if you did, there'd have to be some other fallback.
I actually asked that question because if you're in here, and we have magnetic locks in our, in our business too, so if you're in here and you lose power and the batteries run down, you can't get out, because those magnets are, they're locked, is that correct?
Now, once the battery power shuts off, there's no more power to the lock itself, it's then freely.
Then the city's open at that point, is that correct?
But there is a battery backup, you keep them locked for, what, 48 hours?
For anywhere between 48.
Just a security question, that's, I'm just knowing this system a little bit from my side too, just to be sure, but do they understand?
Yes, once there's all complete power loss, there's no.
Mike, if your lock, you're saying lock, that's not done correctly?
I don't know.
That's your, okay.
I'm asking a question.
We had a major disaster and lost power for about 48 hours, would the buildings then be open?
Then be open, yes sir.
Now, what we could do if that occurred, we'd come and lock it manually if we could have, I mean, we're not going to take this lock away, but.
They won't be used.
That's right.
They would still be there.
But if that were the case, then that would be a special circumstance, and I doubt we'd be able to.
No, we have.
That's true.
So you're going to use? We would just go back to the.
Back to key.
That's right.
How does this system work in a lockdown situation?
We can, you can never lock somebody in your building.
Like, there's always a form of egress.
Yeah.
To get out.
Even if the fire alarm, if this building had a fire alarm system and someone pulled it, it would open the doors.
But if there's an active shooter out in the parking lot.
How do we lock them down? We'd have to have someone come and lock it. Can you lock them down?
You just refer to your.
If, if somebody said, David, I need you to lock it back, can I go to, you ever lock them before?
You can, manually or through programming.
Lock all the doors.
I think that's a policy and procedure question, but we need to consider.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
I hope we never have to.
Make sure they.
But we, but we do need to address it.
So I guess there would be two ways to do it, manually lock them and then I can lock them.
But it needs to be, it needs to be for every building that we have, not just city hall.
Correct.
Any other questions? Anything, counsel? Move forward.
I wouldn't say move forward with that.
Next thing, mayor.
Yeah, Mayor, would you want me to put a photo together to do the other egress doors?
Yes, please.
Okay, I got another question for you then.
Okay.
Right now, the doors that I have questions about are the egress doors, the stairwell, and that's it.
Which stairwell?
The one down the hallway. If someone knew the building, they'd get right that stairwell and get to the second floor very easily. Elevators are different animals, because people have to get upstairs, and I don't know how we would do that for the public. You just, they're just, you know, they'd have to be open, but that would be the only access to get up to the second floor if there was some sort of issue, and that takes time, they gotta wait on.
I would include that, that stairwell door, and that in the hall.
Yeah, definitely.
Do include it.
Okay, yes sir.
Thank you.
Any questions about fire alarm system?
You don't matter, Roger?
Yes, sir.
It says it's attached, and I do not see it.
Chief, do you have yours?
Yeah.
It says, there's only one page that came in our package.
It's a separate.
Yeah, it says it has a separate, it says, I have attached a copy of a proposal from your review, and I don't.
Oh, the proposal? No, that's not in there.
It said, okay, just said it on the bottom, and I didn't see it.
Okay, I can have that, I can.
If you would.
Get somebody, okay. Give you somebody to email.
Yes, sir.
Are you?
Okay.
Because we don't know what the cost is or anything.
You remember the cost of it?
It was roughly around $19,000, I believe.
Is this upgrading or replacing?
You would have to replace and upgrade all at the same time, that's proprietary equipment right now.
Yeah, that's a thing that I found the city went with, it's called, it's a proprietary system, which means the only people can operate it or monitor it is the company that's put it in. So if we choose to go with another company, we can't do that. So any system that's going into the city now is going to be a non-proprietary system, which is, if I get mad at Jeff or, or he's not doing a good job, I can go to another company and still keep our fire alarm system. So, this system would be put in with a non-proprietary system.
Would it be that, or?
It has, it does, no, sir, no. We had a problem there, and what started it is, he's put in the fire alarm systems through the other building, so I just called him and said, hey, can you come out and take a look at this, tell me what's wrong with it, and, and that's what he did.
If you were to get that problem for us, will you?
Yes, sir.
And like, whatever our, you know, procurement requirements are as far as bidding those type things, we'll follow what the city policy.
Anything else, counsel? Anything else?
No, sir.
No, sir, appreciate it. Chief, you want to add anything? Anything to that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. 3D Police Department, security for council chambers, major?
Sir.
You need security?
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, soon as I mentioned, it came up, and I'm recommending, I know, I went over this before a few years ago, that the council can be secured when the need, when the need. I checked, one of our divisions, Byron, our county commissioner, Corvada, Tinnabier, all of these, they all use deputies or volunteers to secure the council chambers, some of them use members of the state, because we have one CD to check, and this is committed to the leaders. The situation in our world today, we can't be too careful, not only for the safety of council members here, but we have citizens that come in, and we need to be able to keep them safe also, but that's something I would like to offer sincerely.
Any comments, counsel? Your proposal to provide a uniform to officer, Mr. Gary Mead?
Even though myself and she'd be here, when, when we're in the council chambers, I'm not looking for somebody coming through the door to be in harm, I'm trying to pay attention to what's being said, so I, I won't look ahead when they ask a question. Hey, what do you think about that, man? I'm trying to pay attention to what you and everyone said here, not, not any threat that might come through the door. I know, like I said, we brought this up some years ago, I know I have before, and I know, you know, things have changed, people are changing, and I think we need to take a hard look, you know, in the city, and I, I was in the office this morning, and someone came in and said, I'd like to make some points. I said, okay, tell me your name, really tell my name. Well, I gave you the date, and I gave you the officer's name, gave you the officer's name, and gave you the date. I said, so I was supposed to figure out what happened and get your complaint if I gave you the name and the date. Anyway, I did a little investigation, I found, oh, they could find out with some points. It just happened I had looked up the file, but my point is, we're in a, a period in our community and our nation and world, so I think that can't be too careful, not that we don't have many bad people in Perry, we should invite them home, but we just don't know, some people have issues, problems, you know, things that just can't be controlled, and we just need to be prepared.
Okay, thoughts, counsel?
I think we're good enough.
Are you proposing metal detectors though, at this point in time?
That would be up to y'all, we have one available, and a few that we, previous day, during, during business hours, we can't put a note to take that's going to go miles long, and that would make this building a building, so everybody coming through will pass through the note to take, if that's what you want. If you don't, you can have this officer sending you all over here, somewhere in your room, or even outside, if that's what you want.
Are metal detectors used by the other city governments?
Some of them are used, some of them, I don't think the county commissioner uses it, no, I think maybe I use it.
Yeah, it says Byron.
Yeah, I use it, I'm not sure any of the, at the time.
Walker, you proposing to institute that?
Yes, sir, I'm, that's, I'm, in question, that's part of the proposal, I, I. Yes, sir. I was, that's, I'm questioning what happened, part of the proposal, I, I. I'm uncomfortable going that far, this is his first step. Uniform officer in our presence would probably help a lot, but, and so, and if we find it, you know, I guess, uh, I think the council and county commissioners, I guess they do use metal detectors because you gotta go through the metal detector to actually get to the chamber, so it is a secure building.
Not in one of our, just in one of our categories. Now, state court in Warrage has a metal detector.
And I know we use metal detector at our municipal court, I, I was just trying to. I thought we all.
I would prefer not to have one, at this, at this point. Again, I'd rather be prepared. Our safety and the safety of the people who come to these public meetings is paramount.
Right.
Where we want to make certain that we have taken reasonable and necessary steps to, to not necessarily ensure it, but give everyone as much of a comfort level as possible. Now, again, I hope we never have an issue with that. But I think that would be, oh, that is a good, good gesture. Council, do you want to think on this? Are you, are you all, you want to go ahead and pursue forms of recommendation? Just talk about.
I just, I, I would follow up, if you're going to do that.
Okay.
On suchless presentation today, is I understand that you, as a citizen, have a right to come into this building, into this meeting with concealed carry.
Right, yeah. Now, I, I am, if we put that metal detector.
That's the difference. If you put metal detector, you can't. Without metal detector, a person, anybody would have. Well, anybody could, but legally, they could come in here with a concealed.
Right.
I suggest, I suggest that we, at this point, we just want an officer to give them the authority, if there's some specific threat or something that he feels like, feels necessary, we will settle it, protect it for the, for the city. We got some threat going on in the area.
Or give you the authority.
I, well, I guess, if I may, um, if that be the case, maybe we could, um, crawl up in the bank and, and make that happen.
Well, if there's a perceived threat, we're not making.
I think like on some of the emails that they threatened. I know.
I know.
I, you know, I would feel comfortable with having one officer as we start with, and see how that plays out. If it's deemed by the police department or public safety people, that we need to move further past that, we'll review it at that time.
That works. Thank you, Major. Council, y'all have anything else under item three, trial for viewing discussion? Very none. Item four, council member items. Walker?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Brian Brack?
This is him.
He's on. He's open. Item five, at fault, head item. Major Brown?
You have your place?
I think I, you know, just wanted to hear about, do you have that?
Yes. Ms. King?
I was just to let you know, for those who have not picked up the audit report, so in your box, um, press it in there today. Just have it in there. And, um, we'll be arranging for representatives from Malden and James to come down. I bet the next morning, I bet the next work session, to go over it.
There you go. Anything else?
Well, just safe to say there wasn't a time limit.
Oh, thank you.
Well, she didn't mention it. I wasn't gonna ask. But I think we would have heard by now.
I would have let that one lie.
Yeah. Chief Parker?
Uh, yes, Mayor, council, I have a couple things. One, I want to let you know that, uh, the firefighters just went out to, uh, six oh eight, Marsha Drive, there was a structural fire there. They've, uh, it was one room of contents, but it abandoned house that no one was living in, but someone was actually staying there, illegally. And, uh, but they got the fire out and everything's good now, so.
What was that address, please?
Six oh eight, Marsha Drive.
Marsha.
Yes. So I just want to let you know, you'll be getting another after action report on that as well. But the next thing I have is, uh, kind of take it lightly, but it's, uh, it's a true thing here. If you don't know, the, uh, Middle Georgia firefighter calendar is something that, uh, some, some, and I'll show you some pictures in a minute, but a couple of, a couple of firefighters from Macon, uh, put this together, and they got a lot of support for this. The, um, all the proceeds for the calendars go to either, uh, what's called J's Hope, uh, for kids with cancer, or the Georgia Fallen Firefighters Foundation. So it's all nonprofit, everything they get goes to those two, uh, nonprofit organizations. And I'm not sure exactly how much money they've raised, but they've sold calendars all over the world. The two thousand eighteen calendar has been done, but the two thousand nineteen calendar's coming up. Although it's Macon bib, firefighters that are putting this together, it's not associated with the fire department because they've made it Middle Georgia. So what they're asking now, they're offering other departments in Middle Georgia to be involved. So, April first, people can put their applications in, our firefighters can, I've got two or three that are interested, but what I'm seeking mayor council's approval, should these firefighters apply, go through a screening process and get selected, their photographs would be in the calendar for two thousand nineteen. Obviously, uh, I could pass this around, you can see how they would be dressed in the calendar, but, um, the only thing that shows in here right now, on some of their fire helmets, it shows Macon bib fire. So the name Perry is likely to show up on some of the photos. So should our firefighters be selected, the name Perry's gonna be on there, maybe somewhere. Now, there are some pictures, if you can't tell what department they're from. If that was your wishes, we could make sure they're in those kind of photos, if they, if they make it. But Mr. Gilmore suggested we ask approval of mayor council to, to move forward, should our guys be able to apply and fortunately get selected, but, uh, we need your approval to have the name Perry, if, if you would like it or not.
Three things. One, that's an option. Two, Mr. Holbert, is there any liability on the city's part for the name, uh, showing up in such a manner? Now, they are, everything's covered.
Right.
It needs to be covered by their floor.
Let me check it out.
Yes, sir. Now, that's more bare chest, you know, kind of thing.
As, as to the, the third point I wanted to make, um, if we did have the city's name in there, that would be a tourism draw for the female. Obviously, yeah.
We definitely sell the chamber office down.
Um, girl ain't has issues with that, honestly. Personal issue. I, I, if I, if I may, I might tell you not to do that. I disagree with women making the sense that they're making, because they would feel so objectified if y'all wanted to do a hot secretary's calendar, and women would complain. So I, as, as a person, I'm not so sure. So, anyway, not trying to influence you, but
There are women in that.
In this world that we stand in, some people find things interesting, so.
And this one is open to all firefighters regardless of sex.
But you can't, that's double standards, is what I'm saying. I get angry at females, they get mad that they get objectified, but they'll be buying that calendar, and I think it's double standards. I don't know.
And just for the record, I did not purchase that calendar.
They get you a hundred copies of them.
But you are gonna put in an application to sell.
Well.
Council? What's your whole pleasure?
I don't like it. I've, I've seen this before. I don't think that's what I saw, but I've seen it before.
You have a nice calendar though.
Well, I don't, I don't buy a fireplace.
Well, I think, I think the, the question is whether or not, I think it's up to the firefighters, if they want to do it, is that correct? It's a voluntary thing?
That's correct.
And that, that this is something that is not related to their employment, here, so that they can do it if they want to. The question before us is whether or not that the city's name could appear
I hope not.
in, in the, um, in whatever picture, if they get selected. Did I state that right?
Yes, sir.
Close the note.
We don't want to have their name on a helmet or a picture of a fire truck without you giving approval of that, if there were to be that case.
Council? Maybe you can tell from the, maybe. Do or don't? You got a problem with it?
I don't have a problem with it.
So that's what our name showing?
Well, I would rather it didn't, but I don't have a problem with them doing it.
The vast majority of these, the name is not just. I think we make the stipulation, but they can just play the, the city name, we should not incorporate that.
Right.
That's the good sense. More power to them. Thank you very much.
You don't want that calendar, I think.
I'm not gonna hang them off the.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Stank, you have anything else? No, sir. Mr. Bine?
No. Thank you.
I did want to follow. Mr. Smith?
Guess I'll follow it then. Uh, just a reminder, um, for all small businesses in the community, for all prospective small business owners in the community, uh, the city, in coordination with the Small Business Development Center out of Macon, will be hosting this Thursday, February eighth, a Small Business Development Open House. Uh, the open house will take place here at City Hall in the council chambers. Uh, we'll have staff in the city on hand and also staff in the SBDC on hand, um, to assist with whatever questions, uh, you know, barriers to entry, that type of stuff, in regards to expanding or starting a small business here in the city of Perry. Uh, we'll also have refreshments, um, and it, I don't know if I said the time, but it's five to six here at City Hall. Um, if you have any questions, you can contact me, Robert Smith, um, and I have suppliers that I'll also be happy to pass out as well. Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
Two quick items. Uh, I think you all got an email from Christine today about the, uh, activity for the month of January. After such a stellar month in December on new home permits, we weren't expecting a whole lot for, uh, January. I was a bit surprised that we did seventeen new residential permits, uh, last month. And, uh, also just wanted to let you know that the new building inspector will be starting tomorrow, and as soon as he gets settled in a little bit, we'll bring him, uh, to a council meeting to introduce you.
Very good. Mr. Paul?
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to follow up kind of with Robert, um, talking about the small business, um, open house. I have, um, highlighted a couple of local businesses here that, um, started off as kind of like makers, um, making things out of their home. Um, I did Michelle Rose from Mawsey Creek, Nashville today, and posted that on Facebook to try to give those citizens out there that might not sure if they can do it or not, but have that dream or have that passion. I thought it'd be a nice touch to let people know that there are people out there that follow their dreams and it comes a reality and they have successful businesses. And I'm also, um, gonna do one of, um, Gwynn Atwater too, at shirts like mine, um, because he is, has a very successful business and started, I think, out of his mom's garage. So, um, just kind of a nice, trying to do a personal touch to, um, to the open house, and hopefully we'll get a good crowd that comes out. That's it.
Does anybody else have anything? Mr. Wood?
Just a reminder that this Thursday is our A meeting at the Warbitch Passion Inn. I think most of y'all have signed up. Um, but please join us. Um, we have several golden hours this year to give out some missions that we started back in twenty fifteen, I believe, to celebrate those that make the best in our community, so I hope that you're pleased with those selections. Um, then our business after hours is Thursday, uh, the twenty-second, at Hanon Cup House. Join us if you will on Wall Street. Thank you.
Our next meeting is tomorrow at five, at three council meetings upstairs, and the council meetings in this chamber at six. And we will be back from Atlanta, right?
Yes, sir.
After that, we will meet again on the nineteenth and twentieth. For the council. There is. I'm only quoting the person. I think that's all I have. But there's nothing else to come before us. Thank you for your interest and participation, Mr. Mayor.